Oh, oh, yeah, thank you. Good reminder. Everyone, if you could please silence your phones. So we don't have any embarrassing ringtones during our discussion. And I don't know who's giving us the official at 6:30. We good to go? Well, good evening. Welcome to the 2017 Sioux Falls School Board Candidate Forum. I'm Sarah Jennings, the moderator for this evening's candidate forum and a representative for the League of Women Voters here in Sioux Falls. Our forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Sioux Falls and the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce, and we appreciate their partnership and the participation of our school board candidates this evening. Now, tonight's forum is being held at the Instructional Planning Center, is being broadcast live on Midco Cable Channel 20 and 595. This forum will be rebroadcast several times until the election. In addition, tonight's event is also being livestreamed on the school district's YouTube channel, which is www.youtube.com/user/SueFallsSchools. One more time on that, www.youtube.com/user/SueFallsSchools. Election Day will be held on Tuesday, June 6th, and conducted at 10 precincts throughout the city of Sioux Falls. These polling centers will be open from 7:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m., and for specific precinct locations, you can visit the Sioux Falls School District website at www.sf.k12.sd.us. That's a lot of dots. One more time, www.sf.k12.sd.us. And again, that's to find out, to make sure you know where you need to go vote on June 6th. Now, in order to vote in the school board election, you must live within the Sioux Falls Public School District. Absentee ballots will be available daily at the Instructional Planning Center from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. through June 5th. This year's election features four candidates vying for one position vacated by Doug Morrison, whose term will expire in July. Demetrius Gliarmis, Randy Dopperpool, Cynthia Mickelson, and Carol Robinson are your 2017 school board candidates. Now, we're requesting questions from the audience this evening, so please write those questions on the note cards provided, and a volunteer will collect them. The League of Women Voters will sort these questions and determine that they address various issues pertinent to the role of a school board member, and they will get them to me. If you're watching at this time, you may email a question to southdakota-lwv@yahoo.com. At this time, we ask that you turn your cellphones to silent, and if you need to hold a conversation, please do so outside of the room. So the format for tonight's is as follows. Each candidate will have one minute for introductions, and as we present questions, they will each have one minute to respond. At the end of the session, there will be one minute for closing comments, and there's no rebuttal time. The introductory comments will follow in the order in which the candidates appear on the ballot. Therefore, we will begin with Demetrius Gliarmis. Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming. It's really nice to see people come to these things. I just learned about five minutes ago I'd be making the first opening statement, so I'm a little nervous, and I tend to ramble, but I go off the cuff a little bit. I kind of grew up here in Sioux Falls, honestly. I went to Bancroft, that's now Terry Redlin. I then went to Woody Year Middle School and graduated Washington High School in 2005. From there, I went on to South Dakota State University, where I got a degree in business economics. Most recently, I was Sioux Falls Police Officer for a short time. I did decide to resign, unfortunately it just wasn't for me, but this is kind of in line with that of me wanting to help people. That's why I'm here. Again, I grew up here, and I want to really give back and have a positive impact on the community that I grew up in, and I think that this is a really, really great start for me. And education is just kind of a bright spot for me. It's been, I've been passionate about it since I was little, and I remember just being in school and helping out kids. I was, I tutored kids, honestly, all throughout K through 12, so I kind of know what it's about. I've seen the kids struggle. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Dopperpool.
Thank you to the Sioux Falls Area Chamber and the League of Women Voters for co-hosting this event tonight. My name's Randy Dopperpool, and I would be honored to serve as your next school board member. My family and I have lived in Sioux Falls since 2007. My wife Kirsten is in the school district and currently at Harvey Dunn, serving as the administrative intern. Our two boys, Colter and Ryder, attend Harvey Dunn Elementary. I have served in the human services field since 2001, and at present, I work as a case manager for the Safe Home Program, which is a homeless program here in town. I'm running for, I'm running for school board to provide equal educational opportunities for all our students. I believe we can accomplish this goal by listening to all concerned citizens and groups, collaborating with educators, parents, and community members, and by always being open and transparent. I'm asking for your support and your vote on June 6th, and I thank you again, and I look forward to your questions.
Great, thank you. Cynthia Mickelson.
Thank you for attending or viewing this evening. I appreciate your time. I care deeply about our children and the community, and that is why, with encouragement and support, I made the decision to seek the open seat on the Sioux Falls School Board. My husband Mark and I have been fortunate to see our three sons, George, David, and Charlie, succeed with the foundation provided and they continue to receive at Robert Frost, Patrick Henry, and Lincoln High School. Sioux Falls will continue to be a successful community as long as our public school system continues to excel with students and families from all walks of life. I graduated from Miller High School. I attended the University of South Dakota, received my undergrad and law school degree, clerked for the South Dakota Supreme Court, formed the law firm Cutler, Donahoe &amp; Mickelson, now Cutler Law Firm, formed the company Mickelson &amp; Company, and started my own grant-writing business that I continue to do to this day. I'm an also active volunteer in all three of my sons' schools. I appreciate the opportunity to run for this position, and I hope to get your vote on June 6th. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Carol Robinson, go ahead.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to participate in this forum. I'm seeking a position in the school board to help improve the education of our youth through the most cost-efficient methods. My education and work experience will help me make good decisions for the school district. I was born and raised in northwestern Iowa, and I've lived in Sioux Falls most of my adult life. I received a bachelor's in education from Wayne State College and a master's in math from USD. While at USD, I was also a teaching grad assistant. I taught high school math and science in Nebraska and South Dakota, and volunteered at my daughter's schools here in Sioux Falls while she was in school. I was a researcher for University of Nebraska-Lincoln, a legal secretary, business owner, and most recently, I was a postal clerk, and some of you might recognize me from working at the window for so many years. Last July, I retired, and now I have the time and opportunity to participate in the school board. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Carol. And all of the candidates did give me permission to use first names from here on out, so we're going to be a little more informal for the rest of the session. And I did want to correct the, correct email address, if you are watching or listening from your home, is sioufalslwv@gmail.com. Again, to submit a question for tonight's forum, you can email us at sioufalslwv@gmail.com. So now, we're going to jump into the audience questions, but please do continue to submit your questions throughout the event. And as I said previously, each event, or each candidate will have one minute to respond. And we're going to go first to Randy. You'll get this one first. Cynthia, second. Carol, third. Demetrius, fourth. And then we're going to continue that way throughout the evening, if I can keep the order straight. We'll see. So Randy, here you go. What is the biggest challenge you feel the Sioux Falls School District faces in the next year, and how would you address it?
The main challenge our district faces right now is poverty. We are at 44.41% of our students qualifying for the free and reduced lunch program. I will make sure we are meeting the needs of these students in our community through collaborating with other resources in town. I have had the opportunity to work in a homeless program, got the ability to work and do outreach at a lot of the services that offer, that offer resources to the homeless population. We've got a great crew at Mini-Haha County Human Services, working diligently on this problem, and I think through those connected resources and living it and breathing it every day, we'd have a good, we'd have a good stance on coming and helping fight that piece and that big challenge we face in our school district.
Thank you, Randy. Cynthia?
Yes, and I would piggyback on that, not only poverty, but the behavioral issues as well. These are costing our district a lot of money right now. We have 130 full-time employees in the district that just deal with behavioral issues in our district. But we do have wonderful opportunities through collaboration. Sioux Falls Thrive, I've met with Candy Hansen, who is executive director of that. We have the opportunity in this community to collaborate and get together and provide opportunities. And with these change in demographics, you know, I'm from Miller, South Dakota. It used to be the farm kids from Miller were moving to Sioux Falls, and that's not what it is anymore. We have a great opportunity. Workforce development is a huge issue in Sioux Falls. 2% unemployment. We have an opportunity to train people, get them into positions and fill these positions, and also fill the, or solve the unemployment low number result.
Thank you, Cynthia. Carol?
I think going along with what the others have said, one of our things we need to do is make sure each student is assessed so they are placed in the proper setting for their developmental, speech, coordination, all aspects of what they need to learn. So they're placed where they can learn, then we can instill the basic, first, the basic education levels that they need, all the reading, the writing, the history, and then go on so that we can give all of the students, all the way through school, the proper education so that they're ready to meet the future, whether it be entering a trade or going to We have, we have to find out what each child needs so that we can direct them to the right spot to be, so they get that proper learning.
Thank you, Carol. Demetrius?
These are all great answers, and one of mine that I learned was absenteeism is a real problem, getting kids to even show up for class. And I think a good way to do that is go to the source. I'm a big person who believes in a lot of communication, and I think what better way to do that? A lot of these kids who are being absent from school and being absent from class are going to get put in detention or after-school suspension. So, so we have these students here in this room who are at this after-school suspension. Let's talk to them. Let's create a dialogue. Let's talk to them, why are you not showing up for class? I think if you truly want to understand these students and get into their heads, you have to ask them. You have to show that you care about what their answers are. If you care about them, I'd like to think that you're going to get positive feedback and possibly good solutions into how to get these kids into class, so they can even be properly assessed, so they can have their school lunches, and so that they can do better for themselves and their future families.
Thank you. All right, our second question, and Cynthia, you will get the first crack at this one. How will you work with the legislature to help them understand the funding issues schools face?
Well, that's an interesting question in my position, but what I would look at is I would show that how we are currently, we received a 14.8 million sales tax increase for the teacher pay, but with the property tax reduction that came with that add to the sales tax, we got about one and a half million general fund decrease in property taxes. And those are, those are unrestricted funds. The sales tax for the teacher pay was restricted, is restricted. We can only do that 85% to teacher pay. So we are in a general fund issue at this point. So that is something I would like to make not only the legislature aware of, but the public, because they're wondering, whoa, you got all this sales tax money. Well, they need to realize it's earmarked for something specific, and it was made for the teacher pay, not for the general fund. So now we have a 1.5 million shortfall in the general fund we need to address. So addressing that and making education a priority is a big issue with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol?
Okay. First, we have to lay out what, what we're getting, who's getting it, and where, how it's being allocated, then present that, and then pinpoint those shortcomings in our budget. If there's any place we can do it, work with the legislator, say, we can make these adjustments, but this is, these are the points where we need it. I don't have the specifics of where they need it yet, but the, we need to have it all laid out when we go to the legislator to say, we have this much money, this is where it's going, we can move these funds, we can't move these funds, and this is how much more we need, and we want your assistance.
Thank you. You good? Thank you. Demetrius?
I think we, no matter what situation you're in, what part of government it's in, there's a, there's a certain amount of funds that you can have. There's, there's only so much to go around. Unfortunately, you do get to a point where this is what is allocated for maybe your school or for roads, and it comes down to, in my opinion, reallocation. Reallocation of funds is key, because if you can't do anything, if there's money, if the money's not there. But reallocating funds to education is going to make the entire community better off. You're going to see jobs, you're going to see businesses, you're going to see everything improve with a reallocation of funds. If we don't have the funds there right now to go to education, then we need to reallocate funds somehow. We need to work with legislators so we can get our schools more funding and get these kids the proper education they deserve to help out the entire community.
Thank you. Randy?
As a school board member, I, I would be reaching out as positively as I can. I would be dragging along Todd Veek with me to help him explain some of these situations to a lot of our senators and representatives. Todd Veek is the finance manager here in Sioux Falls, and I think he's got a brilliant mind when it comes to budgeting. Him and Doug have done wonders with our budget to keep it where it's at, especially this year. And, but the other key piece is, this is also a community issue, too. This is, we need to reach out to those senators, those legislators, and let them know how we're feeling about education. Let them know that we want to start investing in education and not looking at it as an expense. In the long run, it's going to end up helping those, those long-term social issues. I get to see it every day. We get to see that, what happens at the end result of when education breaks down. So trying to tie that into the front, looking at funding early education, early childhood. Sorry, time's up.
All right, thank you. All right, next question, and Carol, this is going to come to you first. How do you view your role in assuring that the promises made to teachers for salary increases and pension benefits are safeguarded?
We'll have to make sure that what we promise them, we can't go back on a, on a promise or a contractual thing like the pay for teachers. They come here to work for the school district, and they expect, they want to work, they want to teach, but they also expect to have a good living wage, and they're entitled to that. But we need to make sure that each teacher's pay doesn't infringe on some of the other needs we have for the school. And maybe we can also supplement the teacher's pay, not only with the promises of the pay scale, but work with the community to find other little benefits that the community members can offer our teachers and staff members to make them feel worthwhile, valued, and enhance the earnings that they do get from the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Demetrius?
I agree with Carol completely. It's one of those things where if the funding has been set aside for pay or, or to increase pay, then it needs to not be touched. It's kind of like Social Security. We, in this country, we've, we've set it aside, but then we keep taking from it, keep taking from it. We're going to have to make that up eventually. The best solution is just to not touch it, to basically put it in a lockbox and do nothing with it. That's there for a reason, and it needs to be, and it needs to be there when those teachers are retiring or they're getting their wage increases, you know, every year, whenever they are due for their wage increase.
Thank you. Randy?
I've been telling you folks the last couple of years, our teachers have proven themselves. They're, they're solid, they're dedicated, they show up every day trying to make a difference. And the biggest piece for me is making sure that their, their pay is on, is on scale. Right now, I don't, I, I still think it's not enough, even though what we were able to provide through last legislature. Because the key thing is keeping those resources, giving the teachers the tools they need, letting them, making them feel comfortable and, and trustworthy that this is a, this is a place for them to be. It's going to attract those good, it's going to attract more good teachers, more good educators, and keep us on track to, to keep this district moving forward to face the challenges that are coming.
Thank you. All right, and our next question, Cynthia.
Thank you.
This is going to keep moving. All right.
As much as I like to skip this question.
I'm just keeping you all on your toes.
Thank you. You know, safeguarding the teacher pay to give them a secure job is very important. One way we all can do it is, we all need to start shopping local. Sales tax is a big, important part of the, you know, the teacher pay, and that was one thing the legislator, legislature faced this year was the shortage in sales tax, and they were looking at, they were maybe not going to be able to get the full funding. So that's one way we can all do that as individuals, or make sure the companies you shop with online do remit the sales tax back to South Dakota. But another way is, we do need to look long-term in how we're going to do this as a community, as a state, to make sure that it is protected. Because not only is pay important to these teachers, it's the teacher morale. And that's what I hear over and over in these buildings, is it's not so much the pay, it's the morale. And why is that? It goes back to what they're at, being asked to do on a daily basis, in addition to what they're doing. Now, it's been improving, but there are some buildings, for example, George McGovern, because of the demographics, there's maybe two members of their PTA, so they didn't have, for example, a teacher appreciation. Sorry.
Thank you. And this next question, it's a little longer one, and I should have said that at the beginning. If any candidate, if you need me to repeat the question at any time, I'm always happy to, especially if you're fourth in the row, if I don't, and I'm, and if I, hopefully I won't forget anyone again tonight, but. So this one's coming to you first, Demetrius. I'm concerned about reading skills, especially in lower grades. We did have reading recovery, which seemed to be very successful, but expensive to fund. What are your ideas on funding for early reading skills?
I think getting teachers' help is a key to that. I think that teachers need to have another teacher, teacher's assistant, obviously, in that classroom to help those that are struggling. If we need to put funding towards that, I know the teachers' assistants are already on salary. And in talking with some of the teachers, they are vital to those classroom settings, and if that's getting another teacher's assistant in there to help, because reading is so essential to our growth and development, we can't learn anything if we can't read the books that were, the texts that were given. It's just going to be a matter of really getting those kids one-on-one and being sure that they put the time in, and also talking with parents, because if the kid can't stay late for school or stay after and do those, the lessons to help them grow in their reading, then doesn't really do much good. So really working with parents as well as teachers to kind of come together for the sake of the kids at the end of the day.
Thank you. Randy?
That's exactly right. We need to make sure the teachers are having the tools that they need to make a difference. Got two parts on this. One, I'm going to focus on is early childhood. And right now, we, we lack big time on not being able to provide equal opportunities for students in this age group. I strongly believe if we can provide that for, for our students, that's going to start getting them caught up to where they need to be coming in. Right now, a lot of those kids are not avail, not offered that opportunity, and they're already behind the eight ball when they come in. So focusing on early childhood is going to be a huge piece for me. Coming up next, I'm really excited about is the MAPS assessment, where that's going to identify children coming in, in the middle, and at the end. So we're going to be able to keep that kid on pace throughout the year, instead of only assessing them once and then sending them on to the next grade. That's going to be a huge piece moving forward.
Thank you. Cynthia?
Yes, reading skills, we all know, that's a foundation of our, all of our education. And if they're not ready by the third grade, the percentage of their chances of being successful through the rest of their educational career is greatly decreased. We, I would look at a couple options to help our district if we need. My boys were in the, when they still had the federal grant, when they had the first grade smaller classes, and to help with reading and so forth. And what I saw as a volunteer in those classrooms is, it's not only just the smaller classes, it's if the individual children are taken out to be read with, as, with an adult, a good role model reader. And so I would look at, especially if the schools where parents maybe can't volunteer, why can't the schools with a lot of volunteers go and volunteer at those schools? Use resource, you know, we, it's not always about money, it's about using what we have here in this community. And that's what we did, I was on the Children's Home Society Board for six years. We would reach out to community with specific and direct ask, and the community responded. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol?
When my daughter was in school, in grade school, she was having difficulty reading to be in with. I knew she was very bright, but I read her, her reading book, her beginning reading book had contractions and different things. She didn't have the words yet. I found an old, old reader that my older sister had had, which is ancient, called On Cherry Street. I got, bought that book for a quarter. She read that book over and over, and she could read. In just a matter of months, she was, she was one of the top readers in her class. Another, so we have to look at the books that our schools are using so that our kids actually can learn to read at the very beginning. The other thing is, another thing besides just the parent volunteers, the students love to help each other. We can't force it on them, but many of them, if you'd ask, can you help another, you're so good at reading, you have all your work done, can you help one of these others that's having problems? Thank you.
Thank you. And again, if we have folks listening at home, if you have a question you'd like to ask, you can email that to sioufalslwv@gmail.com. Again, that's sioufalslwv@gmail.com. All right, this next question is going to start with you, Randy. Please talk about the biggest concerns with behavioral issues in the district and how to best address them.
Right now, I got the opportunity to talk to a few of our Title I buildings. That's where behavior issues seem to be at the highest, I guess. But they, they implemented the Boys Town Model, and the administrators, we talked about it, and they said, you got to live and breathe it. You can't just do it sometimes and not, and not, you know, and kind of slack off on the other days. You have to live and breathe that Boys Town Model in order to make it work. And it's very similar, if you're not familiar with it, CPI philosophy is kind of the same thing. It's, it's really getting into the redirection and, and getting that kid to focus on, on the task at hand. And whether it's pushing the kid, pushing, pushing another EA in or pulling the kid out, those pieces, you, you constantly got to be living and breathing that model in order for it to work. But the behavior challenges go back to our main challenge, and that's poverty. When kids are coming to school hungry, tired, not knowing where they're going to sleep the next night, those all come up and play a big factor in it.
Thank you. Cynthia?
So I've been to the Horseman Building, where the bridge is, it's the Boys Town method, and I'd called it an immersion program there, and Terrance Stine's the principal there, and I had the opportunity with her and the assistant. And through the conversation, I mean, and she really hammered on the, it has to be, they have to be immersed into the program. So my question at the end of it, and I thought of it because with serving on Children's Home, we had the same issue when kids turned 12 or 13, they couldn't be served there. They had to either go to the Abbott House or McCrossan Boys Ranch. I was like, how long does it take to modify behavior? And they said, under this method, it's 18 to 24 months. I said, well, what if you get a child who's a fifth grader? So they're here for nine or 10 months. What do we do? Well, they're done with fifth grade, the summer comes, they come to sixth grade at their home middle school, and, you know, it's obviously on the record, and we try to do things, but it's not the immersion method. So I would like to look at something transitional, because I think that's such a key age, where they're still at their home school, but we are still immersing them into the Boys Town Method.
Thank you. Carol?
Okay. Back to what I just ended on, the, the help between the student who does well and those that are having problems. This works also with the behavioral issues. When all of the students interact with each other in a positive way, they also, the behavioral interaction between the students is improved. And the behavior of the students that are having problems, because they're getting help but not feeling singled out, helps them feel good about themselves and improve their behavior. And sometimes they can, students can talk more freely about some of their problems once they know these other students, and maybe even talk more than with the counselor. And the student helper, not to tattle on the other child, but might say to the teacher, you know, this child, this friend of mine has a problem with a certain issue, can you help him? You know, just be careful there.
Thank you. Demetrius?
Again, great answers, and I might be looking too far into this question when we use the term behavioral issues, because I also, my head automatically, honestly, went to, you know, ADHD as well and autism. How are we helping these students? We need to be sure that we are getting these kids evaluated and getting them properly diagnosed, if that is, if that is a factor for them. Obviously, behavioral issues come into play as well in terms of behaving in class and getting them to do what they're told and do, or do what's being asked of them. But I also just want to be sure that we're properly diagnosing children who have other problems. Like I said, ADHD, autism, there, there's a spike, because we're acknowledging it finally, and we're starting to try and do something about it, and we really need to push more, push more, especially in our smaller community compared to like bigger cities that we're getting the kids the help that they need. to like bigger cities, that we're giving the kids the help that they need.
Thank you, Randy. Go ahead.
I...
Did you start?
Yeah, he started.
I have this form, and it's...
Oxymoros.
Yeah, no, we're going to go, sorry. Yeah, my system is not without flaws, clearly. All right, we're going to go to the next one, and Cynthia, you're going to start with this one. And we had a few questions on this, so I'm going to summarize, so if those of you that wrote this, you're not going to hear your exact words, but I'm going to try to combine a couple of questions, and it's regarding technical education. We made a lot of investments in the district. How do you propose keeping the progress sustainable, and what are the pros and cons to the investment we're making? Cynthia, go ahead.
You bet. It goes back to one of my key priorities, which is workforce development. We are, the employment issue is big in Sioux Falls, and we have, you know, some technical education in our middle school, we have some in our high school, and we also have Southeast Tech. And I think as a partnership in our community, it's something that, you know, we can look at the full spectrum. But I'm even thinking when, for example, at the immersion center at Jane Addams, when they have parent university, we can introduce those parents and those kids about technical education at that age, because they might think it's college, or work, or dropping out of school. They don't even know about this other opportunity that is out there for them. So it's an important part of this life. The other night at the board meeting, there was a student who's at Southeast Tech, for example, he had gotten his undergraduate and masters in philosophy, and went back to tech school, because that was his passion, he loved it. Oftentimes, if, we just aren't exposing these kids, and part of the problem is right now, it's hard to get out to CTE if you're at Lincoln and Washington, if you don't have two class periods to get out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carol?
Technical education is very important, because like Cynthia said, we have a lot of students that either want to go into the technical fields, or they don't have the aptitude for, or interest in going for the traditional college. We have a lot of businesses in our community that need technical workers. I think we need to implement the interaction between the businesses, and have some of them come and help with the technical school parts of our education, and also, as the students are old enough to work, that they become apprentices, or part-time workers for these companies that are interactive, and have those technical jobs. So they actually see what that technical job is, and how important it is, and what it can be for their future. Thank you.
Thank you. Demetrius?
I think technical education is very important. It is something that, you know, maybe college isn't for everybody, maybe going out in the workforce isn't for everybody, and you want to find that passion, and, and technical schools can really live, or make that passion come alive, in somebody who has more proper training. That being said, technical schools concern me a little bit, just because I don't like the idea of creating workers. I don't like the idea of a technical school is there to create more people in the job system. Job system is important, and it will come, but I want to focus more on creating students, well-rounded students, who want to learn, who have the desire to learn more. Now, if that goes into a technical school, that's great, I want you to pursue your passion, but I'm more, I don't like the idea of creating a workforce. Like, it's very important that we have people in this city that are wanting to go out and work and do those jobs, because some of those crafts are amazing, and I, I could never do some of them, but like I said, it just concerns me that we're just creating workers and not learners for the future.
Thank you. Randy?
This, the technical aspect really intrigues me, and excites me, actually, because I see so much opportunity for a lot of our students in the district. Not all of our kids are college-ready, or are set out to, to look at college, but this has opened up multiple pathways for students to open up skills they maybe have never realized. And keeping those lines of communication with our tech schools is going to be a key piece to that kid's success in graduating high school and moving on into a tech school. I think it's a huge opportunity, I think the sky's the limit on this. There's going to be students that are afraid to leave Sioux Falls, there's going to be students who have never left Sioux Falls in their life, and are going to be scared, and we can show them this opportunity, that you can still get this education right here in town, and not have to worry about leaving.
Thank you. All right, our next question, and Carol, you're going to be first up. "What is your view of teacher accountability? How do we keep good educators without allowing the less-than-par ones to slide on by?" Carol?
Teachers, the idea of tenure, or that you always are going to be there, because you've always, you've been there for 20 years. If a teacher's not doing what the students need, it's sad to say, but they, they don't belong in our school district, or we need to work with them, and, and talk with them, and make sure that what we're hearing, what we're seeing, that they're doing the right thing. Teachers need to be accountable for how well their students are doing. They can vary from year to year, class to class, you can teach five algebra classes a day, and no one is the same, and one is exceptional, and one is just struggling. That doesn't say the teacher is bad, the classes are different. But there's an accountability, that you are, have your goals in order, that you have your materials in order, that you are keeping current on all the information that the student needs. And my time's up. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Demetrius?
Teacher accountability is very important. It's, it's going to judge whether or not a teacher stays in our school system, honestly. And I think that tenure is great, but it should never, as Carol said, keep a teacher who's doing maybe a poor job, or less than our standard job, in their, in their job, to be honest with you. If, if they are not getting the results that they need from their class, then there's no reason that we shouldn't put a teacher who might be younger, might not have been in the school system as long, and maybe give, get, give that job to that person. I think for accountability, it's a matter of, well, if you see tests, testing falling in that class, like, there's got to be a reason. And you, we need to work with that teacher to hopefully, obviously, save their job first and foremost, because we want them to succeed, just as we want our students to succeed. But we need to work with that, or maybe have them work with other teachers, to find out what we can do differently to help that teacher. We're not just here to help out the students, we are here to help out the teachers. That's, in my opinion, who we work for. We work for both of those groups, and we need to do our best to help them succeed.
Thank you. Randy?
I think the school has already addressed this issue, and is doing very well at, at seeking that out. They've, we've got the instructional coaches now, that go into the classrooms. We have administrators who identify, maybe this, this teacher needs a little bit more mentoring, maybe it's just to, to regroup, get them focused on a different standard, different method, different style. So I think they've, they've already seen it, and have foreseen it, I guess, and have had, and have implemented these coaches to help out. And it's, you know, it's going to start at the administration level, and it goes down, and as long as our administration stays strong, and can see these, see these points as they come up, they can get those coaches in, and hopefully get that teacher back on right track, and hopefully doesn't end in a firing or anything, but we can get that, that teacher back to, to where they're, where they were, or where we need them to be.
Thank you. Cynthia?
Thank you. And I see it a little different, I think it's being done as well, but I believe it's done, before it's done at the administrative level, it's actually starting at the teacher level. Good teachers want to work with good teachers, and they're going to work hard, and they're going to want, they're working as a team, collaborating whether in their kindergarten, whether the math department at Lincoln High School. So they're going to want to work together first, and probably hopefully, help regulate those issues, and take care of those issues. Then, then if it does have to work up the stream, there is things in place through our administration, through the, as he talked about, the instructional coaches, administrative procedures and so forth. But, you know, we're all humans, so there's going to, unfortunately, we can't, you know, dictate, legislate, do anything to prevent, that there's going to be the one bad seed out there. But what we can do is put those safeguards in, out there for our students, for the other teachers, and for us as community members, to make sure that it's, we can protect as much as we can out there.
Thank you. All right, this next question's going to go to you first, Demetrius. And again, it's an issue we had a couple questions on, so I'm going to try to combine the two. "How do you feel about the legislation recently passed that requires conflicts of interest to be disclosed to the public, and will that law impact your service to the board?" And the other question was just asking if you had any conflicts of interest if elected.
I think it's good, I guess I don't really, I don't have any conflicts of interest myself, or nothing that I see as a conflict of interest. I think it's, it's our, it's your, it's the public's right to know if there is a potential conflict of interest. Now, me not being on that end of that, I, I don't always see what that could be from my position, just because I'm a very objective person. I would never let myself be swayed by any potential, like, because I had to disclose, you know, who my immediate family was, where they worked, and everything like that. For me, it's, my family knows me best, that if, if there were a potential for that, that I'd go the opposite direction anyway. I'm, I'm very much a by-the-book person, honestly, at the end of the day. And like I said, good for public to know, because I think they should be aware of who they're voting for, and who they're electing to officials, official positions. But for me, I don't think there's any conflict of interest, I hope not, and I don't know it if there is.
Thank you. Randy?
Thank you. At the legislative level, I, I feel that was a poor, a poor bill passed down. If, if they're going to have others follow conflict of interest laws, I think they should be subject to the same laws. As me, as a board member, you know, my wife's in the district, but I don't see it as a conflict, I see it as a benefit. Not only she's in the district, she's at one of our Title I buildings. And so we get to see, we get to live and breathe what goes on in the school system. And at the end of the day, I get to hear, I get to hear the struggles, and how that team pulled through, and got through that challenge. Other days, I see her gleaming, because her team had made all the success with this one student. And all of that just falls into play, and I think, through those conversations and that direct contact, I think it actually gives me an advantage as a school board member, and will help me serve as a better school board member moving forward.
Thank you. Cynthia?
Yes. Addressing conflicts of interest, in law school, I had a law school ethics and complex teacher, who, he said, "If it doesn't test, pass the smell test, you probably shouldn't do it." And when the legislature drafted this bill, they were doing it, obviously, in direct response to what happened in Platt, and other issues that, throughout our state. So they were trying to address issues on conflicts of interest in boards and so forth. Now, addressing the issue, Randy, you said that the legislature didn't put it applicable to themselves, they are covered under the Constitution if they have any conflicts of interest. So that is one way, I don't know if I agree with that, but that, they are actually held to that standard. Personally, I don't write currently any grant, my grant-writing business, I have not been writing any grants for the school district or any of their customers, but my husband does serve in the legislature, and he is on the local Sanford Health Board, so those would be the two, his client base for his company is not local, so those would be the two conflicts that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Carol?
Okay. I don't know of any conflicts of interest that I have. I, I do some work for my husband's law office, but he doesn't have any cases that would be dealing with the school district. And if there are any conflicts, like Cynthia said, if, if it smells like it, it might be bad, you should say what it is, and you should say, "I am involved in whatever this issue is, and if it doesn't, if it would serve the board best if I was part of it, then I would say, I will recuse myself from, from acting on that, and I will, if you'd like my opinion, I'll be glad to give it, otherwise, you know, I would, I would say anyone that might have a conflict of interest should, should say, 'I, I can't be part of that decision, and I will leave it to the integrity of the rest of the board.'"
Thank you, Carol. All right, the next question's going to go first to Randy. "How do we make sure the state legislature realizes that pre-K is an investment that needs to be made on a statewide level?"
I hit a little bit on that earlier, and the, the things I would bring up with them is, is looking at it exactly as that investment piece. If you look at, if you look at the positions that I've been able to help serve the community in, and like I said, I get to work with the population at the tail end of what possibly is, you know, education broke down, they didn't receive their degree, those pieces, those are usually ties into why they ended up in the situation they're in. So getting the legislature to focus more on that piece, that in the long run, it's a lot, it's less expensive to educate than incarcerate. And we've proven that with our Safe Home Program. It's, 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 it's comes down to, if you're coming down to tax dollars, and looking at it that way, it's a huge investment in the long run.
Thank you. Cynthia?
I'm pretty excited, I believe the legislature just decided maybe two days ago, to maybe do a study, Billy Sutton is going to lead that for the state, so I'm excited to see what that might bring for our state and our community, because I do feel like maybe we're moving the needle a little bit, to where pre-K might be something. You know, I was fortunate, my kids, I could send them to preschool, and I saw the, the abilities, and what they were able to, the rewards they were able to have, that socialization, education, all those abilities. So I do feel it's very important in our schools. There's a 225-student Head Start waitlist in Sioux Falls right now, so that's, that's a huge issue. And luckily, partners like Doug Morrison started the Hope Coalition, he's going to fund for 50 students outside the district, to at least get them some type of programming. We have Ready to Start to help take some of those other people off the waitlist, but I believe pre-K is an important part to getting these kids ready, and to be able to get that third grade reading and math scores to where they need to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol?
I think pre-K training is important for children, they need to learn some basic skills before they enter kindergarten. And the schools' roles, I, I basically taught my daughter what I thought she needed before she went to school. We weren't in an opportunity to have any pre-K schooling. And we, we need to encourage our parents, and maybe make a packet, or a help thing that we can disseminate to all the parents of pre-K students that don't make it into the programs. Maybe some of the parents won't do it, but, but hopefully, some of them will at least do a little, and will, we can get as much as we can, we can benefit, give them the benefit, and by helping the parents do a little more, too.
Thank you. Demetrius?
I'm a nothing if not honest person, I'm kind of on the fence on this. It's one of those things where I see a value definitely in kids being allowed to, or us to get funding, so that kids can do pre-K. It's, it's one of those things where I think parents should have the option to put their kid into pre-K, and the funding should be there if they so desire. I, myself, my brother, my sister, we were not pre-K children, and we did very well in school, to be honest with you. It's, it's one of those things that might not be for everybody, but I think the option should absolutely be there. If parents definitely want to put their kids into that setting, then I definitely think that we should fund it. I think that gets a lot deeper than, though, when we're talking about funding for public education, because now we're including a whole other class of students now as well. We just have to take that into consideration if we go that direction.
Thank you. All right, the next question for Cynthia. And again, this is one that we've had multiple questions come in, so I'll try to summarize. And the questioners are speculating that there could be an increased focus at the Federal Department of Education, already starting to be, is on vouchers. What would be your approach to, a move to allow more voucher approach in our school systems?
Well, I'm against it. We, you know, I can't control what the feds do, unfortunately, I really wish I could at times, but I can't. But I'm not in favor if we would decide on a locally, you know, I, my, we attend Saint Mary Catholic Church, love that church, we, we're big supporters of the public schools. Our community, I don't want Sioux Falls to become a donut community, that's a term I've been using. And what I, what do I mean by that? Where people who can afford to, or have the transportation ability to do, start sending their kids to private school, and to the surrounding communities, and we lose our excellent public schools in Sioux Falls. That's not what I want. We have to keep our Sioux Falls schools strong. Whether your kids go to public school or not, whether, if you have a business, if you have a, you're a community member, you own a house in here, we need to keep it strong. And so, I'm against, I mean, that's a pretty short answer, I'm against them.
I'll take time back, that'll get us through more questions. All right, thank you. Carol, go ahead.
Okay. I'm not for vouchers either. I believe in the public school system, I think it's good, I think it's, needs to be supported by the community with input, with their, their tax dollars, and with their children being placed in, in the public schools. If someone chooses to go to a private school, that's totally their option, and I have no problem with that. I think they have excellent private schools. I think they have excellent private schools. But that's the people's choice, and the funding for that is up to those individuals who choose that and shouldn't be on a voucher form.
Thank you, Carol. Demetrius?
I 110% agree with both Cynthia and Carol. I do not believe in the voucher system. It's one of those things where, again, parents can choose to put their kids in a private school if they so desire. I personally would like to see the day when our public schools are the envy of the private schools. Our public schools are, the private kids want to go away from their schools because our public education is so good that we are the envy of those kids. And I think we should all be, all our kids K-12 are entitled to that right to the best education possible, and we should be making that public for everybody.
Thank you, Randy.
I think we're all in agreement here. I don't like the idea as well. And to me, it's, it would end up creating an uneven playing field. And if you look across the nation, 90% of our kids are in public education, and turning it into a voucher system is going to kind of create the haves and the have-nots. Right now, we're already seeing it with, within our district. Those that can have the transportation and the ability to maybe open and roll into some of the other programs we have in town, they have that ability to do that. Do all our students have that ability? No, they don't. And so it goes against why I'm running for our school board, and that is equal educational opportunities for all our students.
Thank you. All right, this next one's going to go to you first, Carol. Would you target additional dollars to higher teacher pay, or would you share it with administrators, custodians, and secretaries?
The pay scale or the targeting money should be examined of how much each type thing, each part of the administration, the teachers, and the other staff are important to the education system. You can't belittle, you can't run a school if you don't have a good set of janitors and a good clerical staff. You can't run a school. So you need good workers in all those areas. My feeling is, might not be popular with everyone, but I think the administrators shouldn't get as steep, they have a higher base, so their percentage of increase should be not as high as those on the lower pay scale, because of the dollar amount to keep up with just inflation and living. Thank you.
Thank you. Demetrius?
I would agree with Carol, and her last point especially, in terms of the administrators getting a little bit more of an increase in pay. For me, it comes down to the greater good. And I think that the greater good in a situation, if I was an administrator or a teacher who was making more than a custodial worker or some sort of other job at these schools, it's, oh, do you want more money? Or would you take less of a pay increase so that so many others can have a pay increase as well? I think that's, the easy answer is, I will take less of a pay increase so that others can have more. It's the greater good. We all matter. Everybody contributes to our school system, whether you be a janitor or an administrator. Everybody's contributing to how good our public school system is. And if we aren't showing our appreciation for, top, from top to bottom, for all these people, then we aren't trying to do the best that we can for our schools.
Thank you. Randy?
I would hope we'd be able to come up with a matrix scale where we can kind of tie everyone on kind of the same step level. We don't have to target one, one piece that in the pie over others. It's, you come up with the scale, this is what we do at the county level. You come up with the scale based off the job description, and you follow that scale. And so saying, we're going to pull this much money and give it just to this population or this educator, this custodial group, it's got to, it's all got to fit into that matrix piece. And so favoring one over the other, it's just not going to work. It's going to create fiction, it's going to create a decreased morale, and we don't need that. We need to focus on the possum, keep everybody moving forward, kind of on that same track.
Thank you. Cynthia?
You know, we're all here because we want to make sure we're doing what is ever best for the best interests of our children, in our community, in our schools. And to do that, we have to have the right staff at every level, in every building, throughout our district. So in looking at that, you know, I see that there is an issue I would like to look at maybe in administrative, because I found out in an interview the other day, a teacher who's in the district, for example, 29-year veteran, she could have got an administrative job, started the next day with a $30,000 bump in an entry-level administrative job. And so can we equalize the disparity? Because frankly, I want to keep those really good teachers in the classroom, too. And so, you know, that's something I maybe examine. The, but as far as sharing the wealth in their district, it's all about, we're all on the same team. We're all working for the same goal. So yes, everybody in our district, we should look at when we're looking at pay.
Thank you. And I've been going back and forth here, trying to figure out if I could sneak one more question in, but I think we, the one job I need to not mess up is finishing on time. So we're going to go to closing statements, and Carol had the warning ahead of time, she would be going first. So Carol, why don't you go ahead?
Okay. Again, I'm Carol Robinson. I believe I can make a, be a valuable member of the Sioux Falls School Board, that I can help our school district meet its goal to educate every student in all the skills they need to meet the challenges of the world. As a member of the school board, I'd work to make sure all students are provided the education to optimize their abilities and to graduate with the skills necessary to achieve their future goals. I would work to improve education, especially the basic skill areas. I would have students assess to determine their abilities so they're in the proper learning set, situation. I would improve the recruiting and retention of high-quality staff for our schools, make sure our teachers and staff are selected for the outstanding scholastic skills and backgrounds, excellent teaching skills, and basically their ability to do their job. I would work to ensure that our school district provides the best education possible for students.
Thank you. And I'm going to throw everyone for a loop, but we had agreed beforehand, we're coming this way on closing statements, so Cynthia's next.
Thank you. I believe I'd hit the ground running as a school board member. I'm sure I have a lot to learn, but through my experiences as a lawyer, a grant writer, a community volunteer, I think I can be an effective board member. I would like to look and examine vertical integration in our schools through curriculum, behavioral programs. I really want to help with the workforce development because it's going to help some of the issues we've talked about with poverty, behavior issues as well. I'd really like to raise our community awareness and engagement about our issues and where we can maybe pull in more partners and collaborators and look at the school district as something, as a charitable donation, just like Children's Home and so forth, and expand our education foundation. Another thing is, I find it sad that maybe 5,000 people are going to vote on June 6th when we have this election. And this is so important to me. You know, I have three kids in this district. We need better community involvement in this school district election, and I would be the sacrificial lamb to look at changing the date of my thing to make it a shorter term, to make the dates line up with a better election time. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy?
I want to thank the chamber again and the League of Women Voters for hosting us tonight. In my line of work, I get the opportunity to work with some of the most vulnerable populations. We are in, we're in there on the front lines, we're in the trenches, reaching out to people who are in need. My heart's always been in the right place, and I always try to look out for those who need us the most. I feel my experiences will serve me well as your next school board member. I'm going to promote equal educational opportunities for all our students, and I'm going to do this by, and accomplish this by listening to concerned citizens and groups, collaborating with educators, parents, community members, and always being open and transparent. I'm asking for your support and your vote on June 6th to help bring a positive advocate to the Sioux Falls School Board. I thank you, and I look forward to visiting with you after the forum.
Thank you. Demetrius?
Before I go into closing, the one other thing for me that I wanted to hit on is just multicultural students. I think we have a growing population of multicultural students, and we need to be sure that we're helping them along, whether it be getting them to learn our language so they can keep up with the curriculum, but we really need to focus on that. All right, closing statements. You know, I think we have a good group of people up here, sitting up here, and I don't think you'll go wrong with any of us. I'm passionate myself about our education system. I'm a product of our education system here in Sioux Falls, been here for my entire life. Kind of to go up what Cynthia was talking about is, our vote turnout for the school board is tough. It doesn't look good. It's one of those things that I believe in getting in line with other voting days so we can actually get more votes out there because people don't want to show up just for one vote. And, you know, whether or not it's for me, I would encourage all you to please get the vote out. Talk to people, talk to friends, talk to family about really voting and getting out there because it's how democracy works, and I just want it to be fair and everybody to have their opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you for everyone for being here tonight. And I do apologize, we didn't get to all the questions, but we got, we covered a lot, but the questions that were not covered tonight dealt with technology, areas to cut and to invest, the Code to the Future contract, low voter turnout, and also just experience of our candidates. I expect all of them would be willing to chat after the forum if you have those questions and want to get some answers. And again, I apologize, we couldn't get to them all this evening. We really do appreciate our candidates being here and for putting yourselves out there as candidates, so let's please give them a round of applause.
Thank you.
And as we all know, and as we heard some of our candidates talk about, the right to vote is an essential part of making our democracy function. Please, everyone listening or here, make sure you vote. You can do that starting now, I guess not now, but tomorrow morning, when the Instructional Planning Center opens again from 8:00 to 5:00 from now until June 5th, and then on June 6th, Election Day, the polls will be open from 7:00 to 7:00. Thanks again for watching or listening, and have a great evening.